TVs.
Yeah, I thought they had joined us before.
Radio is live.
Okay.
We had a waiting room for citizens' concerns. Are there citizens waiting to speak?
I don't see any.
Oh, all right. I thought there were six in the waiting room.
Well, they're just, they're here, they're just not waiting to speak.
Okay. So, John, do you have an update for us?
Uh, yeah, thank you. I, um, I provided an update in the packet, uh, in a memo form. And I can just briefly summarize a couple of the key points. Um, again, our, our team has really been doing great work. Uh, all departments are working, uh, very hard, uh, from first responders, uh, to finance people. And it's, uh, it's been really great to see how professionalism of this organization and, um, how it's shining in this very difficult time. Uh, we do, uh, Heather York has been doing a great job with all the tracking of cases. And we've been providing a daily update, uh, on the website for those interested in, in where we are, uh, every day. Uh, Mark Halls is doing a great job working with Mima. He talks to me, Mark talks to me every day. And, uh, they got a big shipment of PPE on Sunday and more is expected, uh, on a week by week basis. Uh, so that's, that was a relief to get some of that, uh, take some of the stress away from worrying about that. Uh, after the board approved the, uh, extension of the deadline for taxes, we sent out a reverse nine one one just to make sure that information got in every household. And, um, so we did that last week. We have a, in- included in your packet, there's a draft calendar that Lisa put together, uh, which is showing all the virtual meetings that are scheduled in the next six to eight weeks. And this is important for us because, uh, as you can see, there's a lot of logistics that go into running a meeting. And we just wanted to try to give you the information so that as, as you're considering groups that want to meet, uh, we'd ask that you try to keep them, um, to less than, you know, one, one per day, just to help, uh, help us manage the workload associated with that, at least for the time being. Uh, great news from Acton Boxborough United Way, they've, you know, the, the impact relief fund that they started a few weeks ago, now they've, uh, released the criteria for applying for the assistance. So Laura Ducharme, our community resources person, is the key contact in Acton to help interested residents, uh, seek those grants. So if you have questions, she's the one to go to directly. Um, we had our first Monday, uh, I have the transfer station being open. And I believe there were, uh, some people that, that used it that day. So that was a good, good sign that people are spreading out their use of that facility to help keep our staff safe. Uh, great work by the men's, uh, the Acton Men's Outdoor Club. Um, the Board of Health, I think on Thursday, said we'd like to change some things on conservation trails. And we'd like you to post signs that say, keep six feet away, uh, CDC recommends wearing masks. And then the very next morning, I had thirty emails in my inbox with pictures of the signs that men put up all over town. So they did a great job, uh, helping us get the word out. Uh, so we appreciate their help, uh, with that. Our tech department, technology department continues to be doing some great work. This week, we started using, uh, remote office phone capabilities, uh, which will help us because we're doing a lot of outreach to residents and in particular to seniors. And, uh, when, when people are calling from home, it's a strange number. So we're now able to use, um, our office lines and use them from home so that people know that it's us calling. Uh, so it's really been a, a great addition to our, uh, communication platform. Um, let's see, we're doing a lot with the radio still, uh, the Job With John program. I have a extra special guest this Friday. Joan Gardner, uh, and Chief Burrows, uh, and, uh, so that's been going well. I think people are listening to that and watching it. And, um, so we have the, I have the calendars, uh, that we can go over later at that point in the meeting. And we also put together a script to try to help people running remote meetings with sort of some talking points to go through. And also a checklist for people to use if they're a chairperson. Uh, there's a checklist that we put together for them to help understand what they need to do to schedule a meeting and, uh, run a meeting. So a lot going on. I guess one other thing I wanted to mention is that there are several projects that we've been working very hard on over the last few year, or few months. And there, uh, we're still working on them, but the pace has slowed down a little bit. One in particular is the Asa Parlin House. Uh, we, we got CPA funding to do that work, and then we got an earmark from the state budget. And we just did the bids and we got a good bid price. We got a good contractor. Uh, we're ready to award the project, uh, but we're having a little trouble with the essential ban, uh, the construction ban. So, uh, we're going to try to work through that, um, to see if it's something that's eligible or not. Um, but, uh, the same thing with Nar- Narrow Park, the Miracle Field Project. We went out for bid for that. Uh, we, we got pretty good pricing to be able to finish the first building, the bathroom building. And so now we're just working with land use to see if that's something that we can move forward on, um, given the construction ban. The other projects that are ongoing that people have been asking about, fifty-three Rivers Street, um, there's some procedural delays in some of the work we're trying to do over there, uh, but that's still on track. We had that grant and we're working to demolish the old, um, building that was there that was our paving used for their offices and start some of the other work related to the dam removal. Um, we, we still think we'll, we'll stay on schedule with that, but there's been a few delays. Um, and Jones Field, Jones Field is ready to go, um, but that's another project that we are not thinking that we're able to go forward on because of the construction ban. So it kind of puts us in a little bit of a limbo, uh, unfortunately, uh, but for a good reason. Uh, so just a few updates.
John, thank you very much. I know in this time you've put in an enormous amount of energy and time. And the board thanks you very much for your efforts in making this all happen. You have done a terrific job. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we have a great team.
Thank you. Uh, Joan, in the update section, um, um, I have an update, um, regarding the housing, uh, production plan.
Okay.
If I may read the statement we've prepared. Um, a housing, um, um, this, um, regards, um, of forty Bs and achieving the ten percent threshold. A housing production plan, or HPP as it's commonly known, identifies the housing needs of a community and the goals and strategies that we use to identify and achieve the forty B ten percent threshold. By taking this proactive approach and the adoption of an HPP, we are much more likely to achieve our affordable housing planning goals. An HPP gives, uh, communities under the ten percent threshold of chapter forty B, such as Acton, uh, but are making progress in producing affordable housing, um, more, uh, control, over comprehensive permit applications through a safe harbor for a specified period of time, which is where we are now. We have achieved a safe harbor with our current, uh, HPP through July twenty twenty-one. The HPP is valid for five years and our current plan expires in August twenty twenty. Uh, since the fall, the planning department has led an HPP process to renew our plan. This included significant local input through focus groups, a community-wide survey and workshops. The plan provides a constant framework from prior efforts and outlines the baseline needs as well as goals and strategies. This is key, some aspirational and some more practical. The public comment for the HPP will start this week. Um, and the draft will be posted on the town website on Thursday, April sixteenth, with instructions how to submit comments. The consultants will present the plan to the Board of Selectmen at their public meeting on, uh, uh, April twenty-one at seven PM. Um, from there, the plan will be presented, uh, to the, uh, Board of Selectmen um, on May four in a joint meeting with the Planning Board for Hopeful Adoption. Both boards are required to adopt the plan prior to submission to the Department of Housing and Community Development, which is required by May nineteen in order to make the published timeframes. So we encourage everyone to read the posted materials.
Okay. Now, are there any other boards or committees that need to set up a meeting? Dean?
Uh, I, uh, I actually wanted to make another comment. Uh, I'll, I'll hold my comment for now.
No, you can go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to, uh, to commend John, uh, Manjirati again. Um, I attended the virtual meeting with, uh, MMA on Friday, uh, where they did an update on COVID. And the interesting thing was that, uh, they didn't tell me anything that I didn't already know. And I think that goes to, uh, as a compliment to, uh, our town manager because he's kept us so well appraised of what's going on. Um, and I, I got the feeling from listening to some of the other comments, uh, that, you know, other board members in other towns weren't as, as up to speed on this. So, uh, again, uh, compliments to the manager. Thank you.
Okay. David, did you have any handout?
Yeah, I was responding to your, your question. Um, SAT SAT would like to be able to meet.
Okay, is that, do you want to make a mo-?
Well, as well, as well as the Economic Development Committee.
Anyone else?
I'm just asking here, should we make the motion that they'd be allowed to meet, but that, um, uh, for, for now that, uh, only one meeting is allowed per evening?
John?
Could I share my screen to show you the calendar that we worked on?
Sure.
Okay, let me see if I can do this here. So, um, this, I think, hopefully you can see it.
Yeah, there it is.
So these are the meetings that are already even scheduled in April. Um, and due, due to some committees meeting, um, that don't need your, uh, specific, uh, permission, there are a couple that are already, uh, twice in a night, uh, which I said we're hoping to try to avoid. Um, HIT, I believe the board approved last time. Is that, is that right? Health Insurance Trust?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's, um, so that's, this is April. We're pretty much booked up throughout April, uh, except for Friday meetings at this point. Um, and then May, uh, we're getting, well, we, we still have some room in May.
Yeah, the EDC is generally a Thursday, uh, meeting time. So the, the busier meetings, I think, are, seem to be in Monday and Tuesday. Um, when you talk about one meeting a night, if a committee chooses to meet during the day, can you accommodate a morning, an afternoon and an evening meeting on a day? Or that's what you're trying to avoid?
Yeah, I mean, the, the issue is, is just we have to allocate a resource, both a, a person or, or, or two, and then some technology. So if it happens once a day, we can plan for it. It happens three times a day. Um, we'd have to plan for it three times. Um, we certainly could do it, but there are several other things that we're, we're also working on. But, you know, I think if someone wanted to schedule during the day, we, we, we definitely could accommodate it, but I, I'd rather not have three in a day.
Yeah, let's limit it to one in the daytime and one at night.
So, so John, wh- why do you have to devote staff time to a simple meeting?
Uh, well, the goal would be not to have to, but that hasn't, so far that hasn't been the case. So I think everyone needs startup assistance. If it's someone that's been meeting, like the Board of Health's been meeting for, they've had almost ten meetings, I think. They're probably at the point that they can, they can do their own thing. But even those folks need us to put them on the radio, uh, which requires some staffing and resources. So, um, it's just, we're just trying to balance the workload a little bit, uh, given, uh, what, what everybody's trying to do right now. And it's primarily, it's, it's the technology folks that are, that are, um, strained, uh, because they're, we're asking them to do a bunch of stuff to get us up and running. And then we're asking them to do, uh, these meetings at night. But I think you're, you're right. Well, we're actually doing some training to get more people able to, to do that. Uh, we're, so that's why.
I mean, I, the, the big meetings, like the Board of Health or the Board of Selectmen or the ZBA, I understand why they need staff, uh, help. Um, the, the m- meetings that have a small number of attendees and, you know, a s- a small amount of public participation, like the, the Dog Park Committee or SATSEC or something, um, they probably don't need any staff help. Um, and, yeah, do, do you agree with that? Or maybe just the first time?
Uh, they, they'll, they'll need us to set up a Zoom account for them. And, and, um, it's, it's not, it's not a, it's work that we want to do and we're, we're, we're what we want to do. We're not saying we don't want to do the work. It's just, we'd like to, we, we just ask that we try to spread it out to the extent we can during a state of emergency.
Okay, that, that, that's certainly fine. How, how would you recommend that? Uh, let, let's suppose, for example, because I, I put in the, uh, tonight that SATSEC be allowed to meet. Um, do you, for them to choose a day where you could accommodate them, uh, is there a process like, uh, that they can, you know, call the manager's office or whatever to, to schedule a night? Or what, what would you like them to do?
Yeah, so I think what, so with the checklist that we're working on, and it's still a draft, but I think what we'd like to do is have people contact my office. And then we can say, you know, we can determine whether or not the board has already approved for them to meet. Um, and if they haven't, we can make sure it gets on the agenda for you to do so. And if they have, we can go to the next step. Um, and that would be, um, to figure out a time that we can support the meeting. And we have, we are talking to a few committees that don't usually meet during the day and are going to try to meet during the day, just as an accommodation for us. So it's certainly something that, that, uh, we can do.
Okay.
Okay. Are there other issues under COVID that we want to discuss?
So, I, uh, Joan, I, I would move that we allow SATSEC and the EDC to, to meet, um, and that they should follow the process of contacting the, uh, manager's office.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, John seconded although, oh no, the clerk has to call the roll. Dean, can you call the roll?
You're on mute, Dean.
Yep. Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Barry?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Trotter?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Are there other issues that we want to discuss?
Yeah, I, I had a couple of, uh, quick questions for John. Uh, have you been able to bring back Jeff, uh, Deputy Chief Vanderhu, to the fire department?
Uh, we are, are working on that. It, the guidance isn't, um, crystal clear on exactly people, the status and how that changed, uh, with that new legislation, uh, but we're working on it.
Okay, and, and you just mentioned Jones Field. I'm not familiar with that project. Is that the volleyball courts that they're building there or the new playground or what?
Um, it's a CPA project that was funded also with a lot of fundraising support. It's to do a new playground over there.
Okay.
They get, they get rid of the old playground because it was, it was in an area that they didn't want, and it was in bad shape. So they got rid of that. They, they, I think they got rid of the baseball field. And they're going to move, move the playground over to closer to, um, to where the baseball field was.
Okay.
Diane, can I recognize you?
You're on mute, Diane. Oh, you need to unmute her. I'll get her.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. Do you have a comment?
No, I, I don't actually.
Oh, okay. Well, we're glad you're here.
Okay, yes, just listening.
Let, let me ask, um, wha- wha- what is the sense of the, um, you know, of, of, of board members, um, as to reactions around town, you know, um, you know, the citizens as we've now been in this state of emergency for a month? Um, what's your sense of how people are holding up?
David?
Um, I, so, uh, I, I find two very distinct, uh, things. So if I have to go to the grocery store or something, I find people inside the store are almost fearful, right? It's also a little bit hard to tell because you can't tell anymore if anybody's smiling or not because they're under their mask. But, um, they, they seem a little bit, you know, apprehensive and they just want to get through their shopping and, and get out. Um, um, uh, contrasted with, you know, if I take a walk down the sidewalk, people are out in their, you know, front yards and, uh, you know, they'll call out to me to say hi. And, you know, you know, we can chat at a distance, right? They're twenty feet away or something. Um, so I, I, I find it, you, you know, the people are okay as long as they have enough room around them. And, and people are very apprehensive if they don't.
Anyone else?
Okay. I think Dean had something.
Yep. So, um, walking around the neighborhood, I've got the same reaction that David mentions. Uh, you know, people seem friendly and respectful, um, no issues at all. And, you know, see, people seem to be fairly relaxed.
Okay.
On, on, on the other hand, though, um, you know, I, I've had constituents reach out to me being upset, uh, again, about Narrow Park being closed and people very concerned about, you know, any further restrictions on, uh, on certainly the conservation trails. I was pleased to see that the Board of Health did not go there last night. Um, so I think, you know, that's, that's one point. The other point is I had constituents reach out to me concerned that, uh, that there should be, uh, more PPE used by the workers in the grocery stores. And, uh, you know, that seems spotty. A couple of times I've been in stores, both here and at Concord, the, uh, it seems like all of the customers are wearing masks, but the, uh, not all the staff are, which seems counterintuitive to me. Um, and I was, it sort of, it sort of missed opportunity at the Board of Health meeting last night that they didn't, uh, address that at all. Or they said, well, we're not going to require employees wearing masks because the town doesn't provide them. And I'm not sure that that argument really tracks very well. So I think there's still some, uh, a lot of concern about, uh, you know, interactions inside the grocery stores.
Diane, thanks, Dean. Diane?
Diane, she's muted.
I'll get her on.
Diane's.
So the host has to unmute me. I can't unmute myself.
I, I did, I got you.
Yeah, I got that. Thank you. Um, so we've, I just want to say how, how amazing the, the school district had, has been able to just ramp up remote asynchronous and what they're calling asynchronous and synchronous learning um, in a very, very short time. Um, it's, it's mind boggling, um, the scope of what they did so quickly. Um, I think socially, um, like kind of emotionally, it's really hard on students, especially our high school students, um, to have been basically, um, I mean, it, I don't think it's too melodramatic to say ripped away from their structure and, and um, the distance from their friends when social connection is so important. And the seniors feeling like what's going to happen to graduation, there, the, the uncertainty in when this is going to end has been, um, just palpable among students. There, there were students working at supermarkets. That's no longer the case. Um, so it's, it's been really difficult. I think a lot of students were congregating at Narrow Park. I mean, they're just, um, it's been really tough on them, I think, from a mental health perspective, um, and on parents as well and teachers who have been, um, asked to convert their homes into their classrooms essentially with kids and dogs and families and, and, um, multiple demands on Zoom in the same house for like maybe less, maybe there's one or two computers in the house. And so, you know, we, we've just, it's been a real like Herculean effort to really launch this. And it's not, it has not been without its social emotional impact. But at the same time, um, I think that students are, are getting used to feeling like, okay, I can connect on Zoom. I can work on assignments with my friends remotely. And then I can get out and go for a run and come back and do some things with family. And so it's, it's created opportunities that I think are unique and good. Um, but it's also just, it's been really tough. It's been really tough and the uncertainty especially. And, and for the seniors, my heart goes out to the seniors because they really, and the juniors too are, are in the high school, many high school juniors are worried about next year and grades. And so it, it's been a lot to put on families.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the reaction Joan, that, that I've gotten from people is, you know, particularly when you go to, you know, um, you know, grocery stores. And, you know, I think, uh, and, uh, you know, a new group of heroes that started to emerge this, this weekend are grocery workers. Because, you know, they're putting themselves, you know, you know, you know, right on the, on the front lines. Um, but, um, a lot of, amongst people, a lot of concern, anxiousness, um, you know, worries, um, you know, people, uh, you know, when you talk to people in their, in their forties, um, you know, how's it going? Well, I'm, you know, working at home, you know, have a job now. You know, big question in the, you know, you know, how it plays out in the weeks ahead. And I suppose it's, I mean, you know, the critical balance, you know, us as a town, um, as a commonwealth, as a country, it's balancing, you know, public health versus the economy. And, you know, what kind of trade-offs are we willing to make? With, with an awful, awful lot at stake.
Well, I think everybody's trying very hard to accommodate the situation. So hopefully we'll get to a point where it's a little bit easier.
Yeah, I, I can't thank, um, you know, the various, you know, community groups, uh, the United Way of Acton Boxborough, the great job, uh, Greed has been doing with her impact fund. Um, the neighborhood brigades and just what people are doing in their neighborhoods that, you know, watching out for, for seniors, um, you know, checking in regularly and, um, you know, we've really, you know, risen to it.
Okay. Now let's go to the annual town meeting and article reviews. Article eleven, Home Rule Petition, Use of Lease Proceeds to Offset Debt Programs. John?
So, uh, thank you. I just, um, you know, we, we are finalizing, the board is finalizing the warrant, um, the very night that this sort of, uh, started. And, uh, the board quickly, I think, took action and pivoted towards handling that matter. But, uh, while we're in this position for a while, um, I just wanted to make sure that we have a chance to fi- resolve some of the unresolved items in the warrant. Gradually, I think we have time, but I just wanted to make sure we, we, we started that process. So this is one article, um, that is related to a proposal to, uh, use lease proceeds from, um, the leasing of nineteen twenty-one Maple Street and use that, uh, those proceeds to directly pay off the debt for the acquisition. Uh, it was a, it was an idea that we brought forward. Um, we were thinking that we were going to be bringing the lease authorization article at the same time. And it would make sense to have those sort of right next to each other to allow the town to understand it in a, in a more complete way. We've since learned that the previous, uh, vote that the town meeting made or, or approved as it relates to, uh, nineteen twenty-one Maple Street allows us to lease out the properties. So we're no longer needing to do, uh, a request for lease authorization. And so the urgency for this item isn't as great. Um, but it is an idea that I know the board did have a preliminary discussion about a few months ago, and I got some questions, uh, that I was going to come back with answers on. And that we're actually still working on that. Um, but I wanted to bring that to your attention. And in the warrant in it itself, uh, if, if you may, I'd like to give an update on some of the articles that we, we don't need anymore.
Okay.
So, um, actually I can, I can share my screen again if that, if that works for you.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So on my screen is the table of contents page in the, in the most recent.
Your screen is blank from me.
Here it is.
Okay. How about now?
Yep, good.
All right, so, uh, it shows here forty-four articles. Um, I'll try to make it a little bigger. Uh, how do I do that? Well, so number nine is solar power purchase agreement, North Acton Fire Station.
Yeah.
That, we do not need that. That we do not need that article anymore.
Okay.
So that's one that will be striking. We already have authorization to, uh, do a lease for solar panels on the roof from an article passed in town many years ago.
Good.
Number ten, article number ten, uh, is actually on the agenda after this, Three School Street. So I think we can just wait for that. Um, eleven, I already mentioned, we don't need that. Um, that's the lease for nineteen twenty one Maple Street. Um, the next one we don't need is thirty five. Uh, we, that's, the Board of Selectmen has the, the authority to accept the site easement. Uh, but there's actually a separate action that we're going to need to ask town meeting to take as it relates to, um, that project that the board looked at earlier, or I guess it was later in two thousand and nineteen, related to the, the property owner's wall and the site.
Right.
Some things we wanted to do there. So town council is actually working with planning right now to finalize the ask. Um, and bring it to you hopefully by the end of the month. So that'll change. The very next article, Article thirty six, we do not need. Uh, that was, uh, sort of a long misunderstanding that I think we resolved um, as we were finalizing the warrant. So in total, that's, I believe, four articles that we can remove. Um, when the town, when the board does decide to call the town meeting, I think we obviously, I think we need a little bit more information before we can ask you to, to make that call. Uh, Boxborough did set theirs for, I believe, June fifteenth. If I'm not mistaken. And, um, we don't have a recommendation, uh, for you, uh, in regarding a, a setting a date tonight.
Okay. How about amending the zoning map at thirty two Weather Street?
That was a citizen petition that, um, we need to continue to try to get the citizen petitioner to attend, uh, to just describe what they're looking for.
Okay. And amend the general bylaw, animal control bylaw violations?
Yeah, that was one that we sort of said, um, I think we were going to pull it off the warrant, uh, when we were rushed. But now that we're, we're maybe not as rushed, we're going to revisit that. And, um, come back to you with some more information. But I just wanted to get the warrant back in front of you all. And, and I know it's been kind of probably compartmentalizing, compartmentalizing everybody's minds. But if there's anything that any questions or any follow up that you want me to do, uh, so we can continue to get this thing finalized, um, and when we're getting ready for town meeting.
Okay. The other one was Satchamway easement discussion?
That is one that we're going to remove. Uh, we'd recommend.
Okay.
So. Go ahead, John. John, did you have a good news update on, on Article three, the, uh, Town Capital Kelly's Corner Infrastructure, the land acquisition?
Oh, yes. Uh, thank you. So we, uh, we gave a presentation actually to the school committee last week, a virtual presentation with an update. And, um, I think when, when the article was presented initially, I think we were asking for one point two million to do the right of way acquisitions, uh, last week, uh, we were able to determine that because of, um, the Eden's property that they own, the state was going to do all of that, including Community Way. We can reduce that total ask to eight hundred thousand. And with some information that we just got yesterday, uh, we can further reduce that to seven hundred and fifty thousand, uh, based on. So what's, what's happening right now is we're, we're continuing to finalize, uh, the separation of responsibilities between the town and the state. And we've been, Kristin Greshard has done a nice job of giving the state more, uh, acquisitions to take care of. Reducing, reducing our costs. Um, and we've been working with the property owners all along. And so it's, it's something that we've been doing mutually. Um, so, uh, that's good news that that number, uh, has been refined further. Um, and we will be prepared to make presentation on that, um, when town meeting gets back, uh, back in motion.
All right. Anything else on the warrant? So we go.
I, I have, I have a question just to come back to number eleven for a minute. Um, uh, John, so my, my concern with those lease payments is that they go to wherever the money would come from to maintain those buildings. So for example, i- if they go in, that money goes into, uh, the general fund or free cash. And then we, um, need to put a new roof on the building or something, or a new heating system or whatever it is. We would pay for that out of that, you know, out, out of a general revenue, uh, uh, contribution. Or if those lease payments go into the, the train station parking fund, then we would hug, uh, uh, fund improvements or maintenance of those buildings out of that. So, um, that would be my, my concern. I want to make sure that we put the lease payments where they're, they would be used.
Yes, I think that was the, you, you raised that question earlier, um, when, when we first brought this article up. And I think that's the question that I, that I need to get back to you, to all of you on. So thank you for, uh, bringing that back up.
I, I actually think, am I muted? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Article twelve is intended to do that. We have a home rule petition to use the lease proceeds. Right now it says offset debt payments. I thought we talked about uh, broadening the language of that home rule petition to allow us to use it for, uh, uh, put it into the parking lot fund basically, and allow us to use it for whatever we can use other parking revenue for.
That, that would, that would be my preference, that it, it, it go into the, the train station parking fund. And then that fund be used to maintain those buildings that are on that property. But if there's another scheme, that, that might be okay too. I, my, my biggest concern is that you know, we not put the money one, one place and then take it from another.
Yeah, I understand.
My, my concern about this particular, the way this is worded, you know, whenever the debt gets paid off, um, I don't know what we're gonna, how long the, the, uh, bonds were, but once the debt gets paid off, we want to be able to use that money for regular maintenance of parking stuff. So, uh, I think we could broaden that. And I think you were looking into that, John. So, yeah.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Joan, um, under, you know, since the town election is part of town meeting, and if Eva is still with us, I did have a question for her.
I think Nina's not on.
No, Eva.
Oh, Eva. Hold on.
Yeah, she's listed.
Yeah, hold on. I'm unmuting her.
Thank you.
We're trying. It's not, she's not, there, there she goes. Okay.
Eva?
I am here.
Hey, um, John Benson, how are, um, how are the, um, the, um, uh, uh, ballot by mail applications coming in?
Um, we are getting quite a few of them. I would probably say anywhere between thirty and fifty each day. Um, we've sent quite a bit through. Um, I'd like to see more come in, um, just to keep people away from the polls, have them vote by mail. Um, I don't want to take, uh, have any of the workers risked at any point. Um, this is, seems to be a more convenient way for the voters to vote. So I'd like to encourage everyone to do it at this point.
So they should just go to the town website and click on the town clerk and get, get the information?
I think at this point, Joan, I think it's actually on the main, um, website page. It's right, um, it had its own little caption for early voting. But yeah, they can just click on that, fill out the application. They can email it to the clerk's office, or they can physically mail it or put it in the drop box. I check each one of those on a regular basis.
Great. Yeah, it, it's featured prominently on the front page of the website on the, on the left-hand side, just below the, the latest COVID nineteen update.
Yeah, actually. I think the town has been very good about, uh, publicizing that. There's, Beacons had notices about that. The reverse nine one one call mentioned that. John's mentioning that in his coffees. It's, uh, so I think we just need to keep talking about it, um, as we get closer to June. I, I mean, can people, can people, Eva, um, send these ballots to you right up to the day of the, uh, June second or, um, is there a deadline for getting them in?
Yeah, the ballots themselves have to be to us by June second. The application should be to, to us as soon as possible. Um, because we do have to mail it out to them and then they have to get it back to us. But the official.
I'm sorry. Are you mailing out, uh, uh, if they want to mail it back, you include stamps so it doesn't cost people anything to vote?
No, they actually do have to put, um, a stamp on it to mail it back. Um, they are allowed to put it in the drop box. I'm getting quite a few in the drop box on a regular basis at the town hall.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then Three School Street?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you. So earlier this year, the board's, uh, uh, declared that this property was surplus and, uh, we started the process to of issuing RFP to see if someone wanted to purchase it. Uh, we issued an RFP early in January, I believe. Uh, we only received one response. And, uh, in reviewing the response, uh, we felt that the respondent didn't meet the minimum criteria for what we were looking for in the RFP. I believe I forwarded a memo to the board at some point in the past, uh, with some details about that. But basically, uh, we're at the point now where, uh, we don't have a, a good proposal that we can recommend to town meeting, uh, to dispose of it. Uh, we do, we could try again. Uh, we could try with a different, um, different terms. We could try and do it just as a straight bid, give whatever the best, give us your best price and whoever does that gets it. Uh, or we could do a, an RFP that has some slightly different criteria that maybe, uh, more people would, uh, respond to it. Uh, or we could try and push it out again exactly as it is and, uh, hope that the individual that responded and anyone else, um, looks at it a little bit more closely and, and puts in a proposal that um, is consistent with what we're asking for. Um, but I guess all those choices wouldn't be able to be, we wouldn't be able to do those right now, uh, and not for probably several weeks. Um, so just wanted to bring that to the board. I know, um, Selectman Charter, uh, was particularly interested in discussing this. So I just wanted to make sure that it was brought back, uh, tonight.
Dean?
Yeah, um, you know, I think the, uh, as I understand it, the, uh, the applicant, uh, that, that did respond did not have a complete application. And, uh, and frankly, the dollar value offered was, was pretty modest. And, uh, you know, at this point, I don't think that we're under any, um, real rush to dispose of the building. If we can't get a good price for it, there's no sense in, uh, in dealing with that. Um, and we've got natural resources and we have, uh, Department of Public Works equipment and even fire department equipment just rusting away out in parking lots. So I think, you know, rather than take a bad deal, we should just utilize the building and maybe revisit this another year or two. Uh, and I certainly don't see the value in, in going back out into the market right now or really anytime soon for, uh, disposal of the property.
Anyone else? David?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with, uh, uh, Mr. Charter. Um, I think we should at least wait until the majority of this crisis is over. It doesn't make any sense to push an RFP out again now.
Anyone else? Okay. John?
Just, just one consideration. Um, the reason that the article is on the warrant is that it's a two-step process uh, that the Board of Selectmen, uh, can sell it, but only with authorization from town meeting. The authorization can come before uh, or after, um, you decide, uh, what you want to do with it. Um, I think if the board wants to keep it on the town meeting, uh, agenda and have it be taken up whenever town meeting occurs, it would then give the Selectmen the authority to sell it or dispose of it under terms and conditions that you deem appropriate, uh, at a future date. Uh, and allow us to move a little more quickly, uh, in the event that there's a proposal that you want to move forward on rather than have to wait for another town meeting. Uh, so that's just a consideration, uh, for you all, uh, that I think we can take up when we're, uh, finalizing the warrant again.
Dean?
Yeah, I, I think that makes good sense, uh, to give us the latitude to, uh, to move ahead with it. Uh, you know, it could be six months from now that that we're thinking about this and it would be nice to, uh, have the ability to do so in our back pocket, uh, and we don't have any obligation to sell it. So, uh, I'll agree with the, with the manager that, you know, let's get, let's get the authorization voter at town meeting whenever that happens and then we can move ahead. As needed.
Good. Everybody in agreement on that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
The only thing I would say about that is we would have to have a, uh, pretty extensive community process. Whatever decision we decide to do, we'd have to have public forums or whatever to have input before we would make any decision on exactly what would happen.
Okay.
So.
Okay. North Acton Fire Station, John?
Uh, yes, thank you. So, uh, with, with everything that's going on, we are still, uh, moving forward with our design process that the town meeting, uh, approved in December for the new fire station in North Acton. Uh, where our schedule has us tentatively, uh, going out to bid, uh, this summer, um, in late June. And we're on track for that. We do have a couple permitting meetings of Conservation Commission and a few other that we need to straighten out. Um, uh, we've, we've been doing a lot of work. Uh, we've been trying to, um, keep Selectman Charter in the loop, uh, on project meetings. Uh, they're meeting, we're meeting every week. Um, I'm, I'm trying to get to as many as I can. Um, and there, it's coming along nicely. Uh, it's interesting. It'll be interesting to see what happens with the construction market and the bidding climate. We don't really know at this point. Um, so hopefully it, it's, um, it turns out to be, uh, okay. Uh, but we'll be, we'll know this summer.
Okay. Is there anything else? We'll go move to the consent items? All right. Seven, approved meeting minutes, March two sixteen thirty one, April third and April seventh, two thousand and twenty.
If you could just hold the, um, the April, um, three minutes, there was just a typo there that I wanted to bring to the group's attention.
Well, bring it to our attention, John.
Okay, okay. April three, it uses the date of the meeting is April two twice.
Okay.
That just can be corrected.
Okay. So executive session, April third, two thousand and twenty.
Uh, if you just hold that, was that in the packet?
Not yet. No, yeah, if you could hold that, we'll, we'll bring that to you next time.
Okay. Accept gift council on aging for fifty dollars from Peter Berry for the council on aging gift account.
I think we should hold that one.
You want to hold that?
I just, I probably, I'm just going to abstain from that one. So.
Okay. So the motion is to approve the meeting minutes for March second sixteen thirty one and April seventh. And approve the executive session, April third, two thousand and twenty.
No, no, we're holding that. So, uh, uh, I think that's not, I, I, I moved that we approved the meeting minutes of March second sixteen thirty first and April third and seventh, uh, with the date correction that, uh, Selectman Benson mentioned.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Trotter, aye, unanimous.
Okay. Approve executive session, April third, two thousand and twenty.
No, we're not. I think we're not doing that one. He said, we're not ready for that.
That, that, that wasn't in the, in the packet. So we haven't had a chance to review it.
Okay. And finally, the gift for the council on aging.
I, I, I moved that we accept a gift for the council on aging.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Mr. Trotter, aye. Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
I'll abstain from that one.
Okay. Uh, four approved, one extension.
Motion carries. Is there anything else to come before the board? John?
Uh, just a scheduling item. Um, the board had uh, discussed public hearings and uh, we actually are gonna need to bring the site plan for the fire station to the selectmen. And we were, we were planning to do it on May 4th. Are you comfortable with us doing that or would you want us to wait a little bit longer?
No, let's get it going.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
We, we, we were meeting on the 5th, weren't we? So with this
Uh, yeah, I, I think we were thinking of the, just it being a Monday when we initially thought of it, but yeah, uh, that
Would, would you rather have us meet uh, on a one shot basis on, on the, on Monday, the 4th to?
No.
So we can
I don't think that'll be necessary. Um, I think we can probably notice it for the 5th, if that's when the board's meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we can move back to Mondays as soon as the board has held stock meeting twice a week.
Okay. Is there anything else to come before the board?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, will Dean call the roll?
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Trotter, aye. Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Unanimous.
We're adjourned, thank you very much.
Miss you guys.
Good night.
Good night.